Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Westminster Planning Commission. Anyone who would like to speak during the hearing that has not signed up, please do so at the back of the room, and your name will go on the list. Will the Clerk's office please call the roll?
Chair Boshert.
Here.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Excused.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Excused.
Commissioner Mayo.
Here.
Commissioner Colling.
Excused.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
And Commissioner Jean.
Excused. So we have a quorum tonight? And all the members that are currently here will be voting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the August eighth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call?
This can be a voice vote.
Okay, that's right. All right, everyone in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, please say nay. And do you read the next item?
Yes. This, there's one item on the agenda for this evening, the public hearing and recommendation on a rezoning, a PDP plan, an official development plan for the Midland Lofts planned unit development.
Thank you. A public hearing and recommendation on rezoning and preliminary development plan, an official development plan, will be considered this evening. That sounds like a repeat to me. Nathan Lawrence will be presenting tonight. Go ahead whenever you're ready, Nathan.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nathan Lawrence, Senior Planner with the city's planning division. We all have handouts, so I'll be sort of telling you just to flip pages as we go. So, flip page to the entries into the public record. As part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, tonight's presentation, newspaper notice, certification of mail notice, and posted notices are hereby entered into the public record. And switch slides to the vicinity map. The Midland Lofts planned unit development is located on the west side of Irving Street, approximately two hundred feet north of West Seventy-second Avenue, and is addressed at seven-two-five-five Irving Street. The site is directly across Irving Street from the MAC and three blocks north of the Westminster RTD station. Change, flip slides to development concept. Approval of the rezoning preliminary development plan and official development plan would allow for the adaptive reuse of the existing Midland building to create ten multifamily units and eight live-work units on the one-point-zero-six-acre subject property. The project features one way in and one way out, access from Irving Street, existing trees and landscape improvements surround the site, and new landscape areas are proposed internally to the site along with thirty-six off-street parking spaces. Switch to approval standards for resign. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from B-one to planned unit development to allow for the proposed project. The proposed land uses, including multifamily and live-work, comply with the property's comprehensive plan designation of commercial mixed-use. The project will be integrated into the existing transportation networks and will serve as an effective infill project in the area. A traffic study is required along with the ODP. Staff has identified no issues with existing street capacity in relation to vehicular traffic. Direct access will be provided from all units to the Irving Street sidewalk and neighborhood bicycle infrastructure, which connects to nearby commercial businesses, bus stops, and the RTD station. The only exception requested from the traditional mixed-use neighborhood development design guidelines is relief from the requirement for all parking to be located internal to the site. Given that this is an adaptive reuse of an existing building that cannot be shifted or moved, in order to meet city requirements, some parking has been maintained along the north and south sides of the building. This parking is set back behind the front facade plane of the building and will be screened from the neighboring properties with landscaping. Slide six, standards for approval of ODP. Staff has found that the ODP is in conformance with all city codes, ordinances, and policies. The two-story height and scale of the existing building is keeping with the surrounding development, and the existing setbacks are also in keeping with those in the immediate area. Parking will be screened from Irving Street with new plantings, and an existing fence and a row of dense vegetation along the north side of the property will screen the off-street parking from the school recreation fields. New plantings on the southern and western property lines will screen parking from adjacent development. The minimum overall site area landscaping has been reduced to twenty-seven percent from the forty percent requirement. It should be noted that a good deal of existing impervious surface has been taken off of the site while still allowing for adequate off-street parking and emergency vehicle access around the building. Existing stormwater conveyance issues will be addressed with newly installed infrastructure, reducing impacts to the neighboring property to the south that is downhill. No high hydrozone areas are proposed with the new landscaping, which will be densely planted with low-water species. Architecturally, the existing brick will be restored, and will continue to serve as the primary facade material. The addition of metal panels, new windows, patios, and balconies will update the architecture of the building to have a more modern expression. Switch slides to Planning Commission recommendation. Staff recommends holding a public hearing to review the proposed rezoning, preliminary development plan, and official development plan, and that the Planning Commission recommend approval with the finding that they meet the criteria set forth in sections eleven-five-fourteen and eleven-five-fifteen of the Westminster Municipal Code. And next slide, city strategic plan goals. Staff finds that approval of these applications would meet the city council's strategic plan goal of shared sense of community through the provision of ten new housing units and eight live-work units that will be integrated into the surrounding community, and also the goal of robust infrastructure through the incorporation of thoughtfully designed transportation and stormwater infrastructure systems. The applicant is here with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you for your attention, and staff is in attendance to answer any questions following
All right, thank you, Nathan. My name is Dennis Finn. I am the applicant for this position, for this project. Myself, along with Nick Antonopoulos, really comprised the development team, and I do want to thank Commissioners all for being here and letting us, you know, present our project to you, and really want to give a shout-out to city staff, who has really helped us along the way and got us to this point, which has really, really been great. So if you go to the next slide, which should say existing building. We're proposing to convert the existing two-story building through adaptive reuse and an extensive remodel in order to create eighteen dwelling units, eight of which will be live-work spaces, which will be located on the main floor, and then ten standard residential spaces located on the second floor. The existing building is seen as, as picture is a recent picture. We can see windows are boarded up, and, you know, the building is starting to get dilapidated. So if you want to go to the next slide, which should say main level plan. The existing conditions of the building and the site lends themselves to savings and adaptive reuse rather than demolition and a total redevelopment, and only a PUD can allow us the need of latitude in providing site-specific standards that it would be otherwise impossible to achieve under Prescriptive Zone districts. However, we are substantially diverging from multifamily, we are not substantially diverging from multifamily residential design standards, and we do comply with the specific intent to the Westminster Comprehensive Plan. We are not adding to the existing building massing or height, nor the intensity of the use. In addition, we'll be able to correct the internal site drainage along with other site-related issues through this process. If we go to the next slide. Eight live-work spaces will be provided on the main floor. It's an ideal solution for the kitchen-table startups, freelancers, you know, a live-work unit is a space that combines your workspace with your living quarters, so essentially you work from home, but with a dedicated space for your office. And then if we go to the, oops, next slide. So eight, ten residential spaces provided in the upper level. We will provide new energy-efficient windows and doors. Amenities like, you know, adding large outdoor decks for every user on that level will enhance their livability as well as express the multifamily nature of this building. And if we go to the next slide. We'll enhance the existing building by saving and restoring the brick facade and by using new materials to complement the existing where needed. In particular, the front facade will be enhanced with an entry feature expressed of a modern idiom of the new design. Want to go to the next slide. The energy efficiency of the building will be brought up to current standards and beyond with the building systems, so new HVAC, new electrical, new plumbing, all that will be fully replaced. Each live-work unit on the main floor will be accessed directly through a private mini courtyard rather than a convenient common-space corridor. This way, they have access to the outside, and people have access from the street directly to those live-work units, which will further distinguish the live-work use from the standard units. And on the last slide, site considerations include the provision of a large common green space buffering the rear of the building from the parking area. Also, the site configuration allows for convenient adequate parking while still maintaining the needed landscaping to bring the overall functionality and appearance of the project to a higher standard than the norm. New onsite drainage improvements will help alleviate flooding in the property to the south. So we believe that transforming this existing building in use and function as well as design integrity will be enhancing both the site itself as well as the surrounding neighborhood in a meaningful way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Commissioners? Very well. I will open the public testimony at this time, and Abby, do we have a list of people who wish to speak?
We do. The first person on the list is John Palmer.
Good evening, Commission. Couple of things I'd like to bring to your attention and to you people's attention. The first attempt at posting the development sign, by the second day, it was folded in half, and Mr. McConnell, Mr. Offleberg will attest to that, that somebody had to go down and make the sign actually visible so you could see it driving by. So that was taken care of. I don't know if that was staff or if that was these people, but thank you for seeing that that happened. Couple more things. I didn't hear anything in regards to the second floor being ADA accessible. Is there an elevator? Is it going to be ADA accessible? I don't really see on this picture here any designated handicap parking spots. Will there be some? If so, what is the requirement, and will it be met? Also like to talk about the existing graffiti on the building. Hopefully, that will be remedied in short order so that the neighborhood down there doesn't have to look at it. The kids over at the STEM school aren't subjected to that, so hopefully, the developer will take care of that in a very timely manner. And next, and most important, I do hope that this building is being tested or has been tested for both meth, excuse me, meth and fentanyl, because we know the homeless people have been in there for an extended period. If it has been tested, I think you should ask for the results. If it hasn't been tested, it needs to be, and there needs to be public documented record of the testing for everyone's safety. Make sense? You know, I don't have a problem with the development. I think it's a good thing. The building's been a nice orb for a long time, been kind of a code problem for a long time, so it is good that it's being taken care of, but there are issues that do need to be addressed. And again, the meth and the fentanyl are the most important, especially moving forward with new owners, and I didn't ask that. I'm assuming these are rent units as opposed to owned units? That was never mentioned, okay. So if they're rent-owners, we're taking a bunch of people's lives in hand with the potential non-abatement or abatement of the fentanyl and meth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
I'm sorry. The next speaker on the list is Gus McNicholson.
Thank you very much for putting me on that list. First of all, I want to thank you folks. You probably have other lives you deal with, and to take your time out to be here and help the community grow and develop in this way is something that everyone, not just the citizens of Westminster, but a lot of people appreciate, and I certainly do. I am the former owner of the property, and currently, I represent the owner of the property as a licensed real estate broker. And in addition to the architects and engineers who've worked very closely with your community planners, they're, I'd like to introduce Gerald Nunez, who is a, the first time I met him, he was trying to help a lady, I think in Federal Heights, who was going to lose her property because the developer or the contractor was gipping her out of something. So he came to us and said, I'd like to see something happen with this property. And he lives here in Westminster, and so we all got together and, together with the planning people, became very, very serious about getting this project to the finish line. And the reason I'm taking the time to say all this is because the history of this property is very, has been challenged all along, and the possibility that we are now at the doorstep of seeing something resurrect like this, I think, is very important, certainly for that particular part of the city, and I hope that you'll look favorably on the project. It had previously been a charter school. When I owned the building, I leased it to a charter school. Two and a half years into the lease, they wanted to get out of their lease. They took me to court. No matter what you hear about the courts in Colorado, I can tell you that the justice is fairly served in this state for all of us, and the building has suffered in the wake of the school's abandonment. It was challenged, as Mr. Walker noted, with homeless people in vagabonds who went in there. I myself cleaned, personally, cleaned up the inside of the property from needles and things like that that I saw. I never saw any equipment that you could, that you could call, you know, boiling or crack or anything like that. I'm not an expert, I admit, but I can tell you that if that's something that needs to be done, I'm sure that the developer will do it. We're at a point that, if it doesn't get done, what's the alternative? You get a mega-developer to come in, scrape everything, and then, you know, put up a huge five, six, seven-story property and give you another hard time for seven or eight months. So as I stand here today, I can tell you that I have a personal sense of satisfaction that we've reached this point, and I hope that you will look favorably on the project and get it over the line.
One more thing. Can you go ahead and state your name and address, please?
Yes, sorry. Constantine Nicholson, I go by Gus. I live in Avon, Colorado, at twenty-three-forty Old Trail Road, Unit West, and I come down here pretty often, and I'd like to see the building look like the plans show it's going to be. And if you have any questions about the building's history or anything particular or peculiar to it, you're welcome to ask me, because, like I said, I was the hands-on owner for, since two thousand and four until about two thousand and sixteen or so, sixteen or seventeen, somewhere around there.
Your five minutes are up.
Pardon?
You have your five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person I have on the list is Dennis Finn. Okay. The last person I have on the list is Nick Anto, sorry.
Antonopoulos, I'm the architect. I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay, great. That's the last person I have.
Okay, I did see someone come in afterwards. Did they wish to speak?
Yeah, I actually live in the neighborhood.
Okay. Okay, come on up. Go ahead and state your name and address, please.
My name is Gerald Nunez. I live at seventy-four-seventy-one Irving Street, so I live two blocks north of there. Almost, it's, you could see it from my house. The building, it's a solid brick building. It's a beautiful building. I think it would be destructive to have a builder come in and tear it down. I think the way it stands, it's a beautiful building to keep it in its integrity the way the plans show. I think that's what we're looking for in that neighborhood. My family's lived there over forty years now, seventy-fourth and Irving. You know, I've talked to Gus a few times about the building, and we're glad that they're trying to leave it in its integrity and keep it the way it is. We believe it's beautiful. We believe the eighteen units is going to do something for the neighborhood, bring good families in, you know? There's schools around there, then you have the library across the street. We would like something to see done with that building, but we do like the plans that are being presented. We like what's to come forth if they are approved, okay?
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, I just realized, we did not address the voicemails. Were there any voicemails left?
I do not believe there were any voicemails.
Okay, so we don't need to enter any into the record? With that, I will conclude the public testimony portion of the hearing, and we can either entertain a motion, or if there's questions, we can ask those. Commissioner Tomacek.
I wanted to ask Gus, when was this building built?
Nineteen-seventy, between nineteen-seventy-one and nineteen-seventy-two. It was originally the Midland Bank Building, and if any of you are old enough to remember the bank crisis. Chair Boshert, I'm sorry to interrupt.
He needs to speak. Microphone, thank you. Thank you, Gus.
Pardon? The bank crisis of the late nineteen-eighties, I can't remember what they called it. It had a name.
Savings and loan.
It was a savings loan, yeah. Anyway, and then it became a commercial office building, and I bought it, and I had a lot of small tenants in it, but it wasn't, and you might remember that the Northeast Regional Parole Office of the Department of Corrections had a large facility there, and they were looking to move into a building that had been built for another law enforcement agency just down the street here on the other side of Highway thirty-four. And, but for some reason, the Highway Department, CDOT, was involved in that, and they were delaying and delaying and delaying, and I knew that if they left, I wouldn't be able to make up for what I paid for the building in terms of its operation, so I went looking for the Great White Whale, which happened to be a charter school. The charter school, and since, you know, having gone to court with them and everything, has run very, very well, they wound up taking over a school building across from Regis down in Denver. And, but they still were on the hook for the lease, which was beneficial for us because we couldn't have afforded to keep the building. And the fact that there's this gap now that you see and all the deterioration that's taken, what's remarkable about the building is that just before all that happened, we put a new roof on the building, and that roof was put on by a man who takes a lot of pride in that. He took me up to the top and showed me the whole thing, and the galvanized sheet metal and the membranes are all the best, and the building itself, made out of brick the way it is, it's sort of a steel-and-brick structure, is very, very sound. So Mr. Nunez is right when he talks about the quality of the building and the fact that people identify with it. We thought about a number of different names, but we always.
How many bites of the apple does he did? You already had his five minutes. A simple question was asked.
Chair Boshert.
Yes.
You can call order, please.
We need to call a meeting to order. He's answering a question from a Commissioner, and so we're going to let him finish.
So despite the lack of maintenance and deterioration, the building still stands, and when they do the extensive renovations they're talking about, the building will hopefully stand for many, many more years.
Thank you. I have a question for staff or the applicant. A valid question was raised by one of the speakers about ADA compliance. Will there be access to this, both floors on this building?
I'll ask the applicant team, the architect, to answer that. I can say that there are four ADA spaces on site.
Okay, thank you.
And that meets our requirements.
Right, the parking ADA spaces are indeed on the site plan. We have made provisions for that entire lower level to be ADA compliant, so the upper level, frankly, we can't afford to put an elevator in this structure. I'm not sure that the upper level is actually going to require any ADA spaces as long as we have a surfeit of them on the lower level. So they can serve as ADA from a practical standpoint, but getting a wheelchair up onto that second level would kind of obviate the reasoning there, so all I can say is that we can make whatever accommodations we can, but the ADA aspect of this is on the lower level.
Thank you. And Nathan, they meet all the standards the city has for ADA compliance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I do have one other quick one. Has the site been tested for any contamination, either meth or any other forms?
I'd ask the applicant team.
Okay.
I can answer that question. As a condition of the lease for the charter school, the State Department of Education required us to do a full remediation. So, asbestos, PCBs, everything has already been done, and we have the environmental reports for that.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Unless there are more questions, we can entertain a motion on this. Commissioner Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hereby move that the planning commission recommends to the city council to approve the rezoning preliminary development plan and official development plan for the Midland Lofts located at 7255 Irving Street. The recommendation of approval is based on a finding that the rezoning preliminary development plan and official development plan are generally supported by the criteria set forth in sections 11-5-14 and 11-5-15 of the Westminster Municipal Code respectively.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayo. Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, I will call the question. Can we get a roll call, please?
Chair Bosscher.
In favor?
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Yes.
And Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Do we have any old business on the agenda?
We have no old business this evening.
Okay. And the next meeting is September 12th, is that correct? Very good.
That is correct.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Nathan, for your presentation, and thank you, Abby, for getting this meeting together. This meeting is hereby adjourned.